Kenyon?
Here.
Truska?
Here.
Zilner?
Here.
Slaski, here. I'd like to welcome you all to the public hearing. Our attorney will explain what's going to happen this evening and what we're going to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If everybody can hear me. If not, let me know and I will speak a little louder. The purpose of tonight's hearing is on the request for a rezoning from the residential district to the village mixed-use district. It's important that everybody understand that we're not here to approve any particular development tonight. This is strictly a rezoning, okay, request. When you look at zoning from its basics, zoning allows a community to basically develop and to have a plan for development, okay? And that's based on a number of different factors, your master plan, your uses that are currently going on. And when you have a zoning ordinance first enacted, there are certainly circumstances that may arise that will have a change in circumstance. The character of a neighborhood may change. The implementation of the master plan may allow for a rezoning. So that's really the purpose of tonight's hearing, is to consider those rezoning requests, not to look at a particular store or development. Generally, when you have a public hearing for a rezoning, the applicant will go first, will explain the reasons why they want to have the rezoning, and may even explain to you what their planned purpose is. But again, it's not to approve any particular development. Then, generally, the chair will open it up to the members of the public that are speaking in favor of the applicant, in favor of the rezoning request in this case. After that, the public will be given an opportunity for those who are speaking in opposition to the requested rezoning. After that is done, then typically the applicant is given some rebuttal time to address questions or concerns that have been raised in other portions of the public hearing. Once all of that is completed, the chair will then declare the public hearing over, and then the planning commission will get into discussing the case of relative merits of the request to rezoning, either pro or con, and ultimately will make a decision tonight on the request. Understand that the planning commission tonight only makes a recommendation concerning whether the rezoning should be requested. When you do a rezoning, it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And the only body that has the legal authority to change the zoning ordinance by amendment is the village council. So in fact, tonight's hearing, after gathering all the information, the planning commission will make one of two recommendations. Either they'll recommend to the village council that the rezoning be approved, or they'll make a recommendation that the rezoning be denied, okay? That's not a final decision. That final decision will only come from the village council. So that's generally the procedure that we're going to have tonight. And so I turn it back to you, Madam Chairman.
All right, so is the applicant on this floor?
I'll try and put this up so the jury can see it. And I believe the planning commissioners have copies. So I'll kind of put this, you know, mine, so that the audience can see. And here's the chair. I don't want to block. Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Jim Nolanowski. I'm with Nolanowski Engler. We're on Grand A, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing Big West Five LLC. The president also is Pete and Greg Olazut, who are members of the LLC. And they're the ones who are actually have applied for the rezoning through agent authorizations on behalf of the present landlords. They do have purchase agreements, is my understanding, to whip these three properties in question with the present landlord, pending, obviously, agreements specific to that. The property in question is located on Main Street or on 88, on the west side between Covert and Ballard Street. There's three residential parcels, and there's three existing residences on them. We're requesting that be rezoned from the present residential to the commercial zoning that the township would allow. The intent of that is to put a retail establishment on this property. We feel that because it is on the main highway on 88, the commercial zoning is appropriate for, if not mine, for the use in question. Without proposing a rezoning in this area, which we brought up at the last, that's me, as your attorney mentioned, that it shouldn't be relevant, but we wanted to bring that up anyway. Because if you rezon, anything can be built there within the commercial zoning. So we have been in contact with your village staff. I've talked to Lee Larry, who's the village president.
Yes, he's the president.
Okay, we talked to him, and I've talked to the zoning administrator. And my understanding is that when this property was secured, it was under the assumption of real estate agents that this was potentially commercial or master plan was commercial. We've since found out that the master plan does not show this commercial, but we still feel that it's a justifiable location. There's a flower shop immediately across the street that's active presently. And there's, based on your present land use map, there's another location within this block on the east side of the street that is also zone commercial. So there are two existing facilities immediately east of this, which are commercial or zone commercial. We have found out that there is available municipal water that we could serve as a site. We would have to get an onsite septic permit from the county health department for onsite septic system. The cells here should warrant that. It's very low usage for the type of facility that we're proposing. We'd have to work with MDOT on whatever work would be done within the MDOT right away, get ready, contacted them, but that wouldn't be within our site planning phase if we would get to that point. So we feel it's justifiable. We feel, in our minds, this could be an advantage to the community. We're here to might answer any questions through the planning commissioners. And I'd like to direct my questions from the commissioners to us, if possible. And if you want me to address the audience, I will. But other than that, I'm going to be dealing with the planning commissioners. With that, if you have any questions, free of us to do whatever we can to help answer them. Any further questions I can answer for the planning commissioners?
You mentioned that there was a second commercial business. That business is no longer there.
Well, it's still zoned, according to your, oh, according to your land use map, it shows commercial. Now, whether, I'm just going by your map.
That was the old hair salon.
But flower shops, we just go by, it seems like that. And the master plan shows you're proposing commercial hanging in the block north. But this is the main highway. If you, I know as you go south, which is the township, you understand that there's all kinds of commercial going on, and right along the front of the highway. And normally along the main corridor, like this commercial is not that normal. So we're here tonight to answer questions, something that this commission recommended to the village council or the board, that the changes coming to be approved.
Can I have a question for the other person? Okay, I'd like to invite people in favor of the rezoning application to speak. Do you stand and identify yourself?
Do you want to limit that to?
Actually, three of them. You can play by here, but we're fractionally three of them.
I'll start first. My name is Amanda Steele. I live in the property that they're discussing that used to be commercial. So I would be right across the street from their business. And I don't see why they wouldn't be able to go there. And they're right across the street. I have two small children that live in that home, and it wouldn't bother me if they went there.
I'm Deborah Bailey. And one of the houses that they're talking about is my daughter's place, and I don't see a problem with letting her get a new fresh start and be able to get into a better home. I think that would be a good idea, and I think it would bring jobs in the community, and I think it would as well.
I'm one of the homeowners. And I'm for it for the fact that my house has fallen apart. I could never afford to fix it, and this has given me an opportunity to rebuild.
Can I have your name, please?
Wendy Fong.
Any other comments in favor?
Are you in favor?
In favor?
He can't.
No.
Oh, then he can't.
Any other residents in favor that want to speak? Let's move on to in opposition of the rezoning request.
I'm George Walsky. I got a few questions, I guess. Has the commission done the impact study on changing this to commercial? And I don't mean to be rude, but it seemed like nobody knew that one property was already commercial, which could be iffy, because it's just a flower shop or whatever salon.
I guess, I guess, that was grandfathered in, it was pre- zoning, and existing business were allowed to do that.
Okay. So they didn't have to come to a committee like this to get approved?
No.
So is there any impact study done by the commission prior to this meeting?
No.
Okay. Before it goes to the village, don't you think that would be a good thing for this committee to do an impact study before you turn it over to them?
If I could address that. When you're talking about an impact study, you're talking about what's going to be the impact of a potential development, the store.
Exactly.
This meeting is not about the store, okay? This meeting is about a rezoning request to the village mixed-use district, okay? So any impact statement would come about, and if you're going to do one, when you're approving the site plan for a potential store, that's not the issue tonight.
Right. So what's the gap between where they wanted rezoned and town?
It's about a block.
About a block?
Yeah. But again, that's shown in the master plan.
That's what I'm talking about.
It's, it's that.
And then, we already are confused, kind of on the other side. We got two that they didn't outline real good there, but we got two that are commercial and two that are not.
As I understand, the one, the flower shop is a non-conforming use, okay? Which was established long before zoning was in this village. And because it was a lawful non-conforming use, it was allowed to continue, all right? It has nothing to do with implementing the master plan, okay? I'm not aware of any other zone, any other property zoned village mixed-use in this area, okay? The applicants made a statement that there was commercial on the other side. I'm not aware that that's on the zoning map, okay?
So, in other words, if we would have researched that before, we wouldn't have this confusion now?
It's mutual confusion. The zoning map does not show a village mixed-use parcel opposite those two parcels, those three parcels. That's what the map shows.
You mentioned, Brian, that about this is not a meeting in which we're to talk about the impact of said store. Is there, is there going to be another meeting where you would talk about impact?
Assuming, assuming that there is a rezoning request, and they actually approve, that we actually rezone the property, then you'd have to go through a site plan approval process, okay? That's where you'd actually look about the impact of, on the store itself. This is not about the store itself, this is about zoning classification.
Yes, sir.
I'm Robert Moore. I've been a part of the community for 38 years. I've seen a lot of positive things go on here. I'm concerned that there has been a financial incentive to turn over this property to a commercial development. I'm also concerned that by expanding the commercial development that you're proposing here or requesting, excuse me, that there is no limit, that we can come back again and do another commercial thing, and think you can make a profit off of doing this. The other thing is, it sends a clear message, I believe, to the residents of this community that anything might go. You're not safe wherever you are. No matter what goes in next door, you have no control if the zoning board approves it. So expanding that commercial strip, I think is a detriment to the community. Thank you.
Especially with empty buildings down town.
My name is Dorothy Malonis, and I have owned the antique shop, which is zone commercial, for many years. And it's just, that flower shop is here, I'm right in here, this p corner. And even though I'm zone commercial, I don't think it's good to have the town all torn up on the main street for a building that they want to put. They're there for a few years, and next thing you know, they're belly up and looking for more property someplace else. You can see there's Charboy, Bel Air. There's no end to it. They'll do the same thing to our town. And I don't approve.
You know, I go to a lot of dollar stores, but I personally can't really think of one that's in a neighborhood, where you put it where there's like houses surrounding it. And we own, we own property adjacent on the other corner of Ballard. Now, are there going to be trucks going in and out of them side roads?
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes I have kids, grandkids running around there. Are they even allowed to go there in the winter on them roads? I don't blame you guys at all for taking your money for your house. You'd be a damn fool not to take that much money. I'm not saying anything against you guys for taking the money for your house. Because I was born here, raised here, and I've never seen a dollar store in the middle of a housing development before. And I'm just curious, if the people in the dollar store, have you done this before? Have you made money with your building with a bunch of houses around it?
They do all the time, so you walk to it.
All dollar stores I've ever been to on here, outside of town, there certainly isn't a house right across the street from it.
People need to speak one at a time. People need to address the chip, not getting back to having a conversation amongst themselves, or we're going to lose control of this public hearing. The lady needs to identify herself, I'm not sure.
Could I have your name, please?
Deborah Blackwell.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barb Schecter, and I've been a resident of the community for close to 30 years. Barb Schecter. And I'm a retired teacher from the school district. I know, I see former students sitting on the floor. My concern with rezoning it anyway, whether it be, I mean, at this point in time, it wasn't brought as a rezoning, and then looking for businesses to come in. It was a business that seems to have come in, made some decisions, made some offers to people, and that sort of thing. And then it was brought to the attention of a lot of people about the rezoning. It's kind of like, to me, backwards. If we needed a rezoning area, you know, rezoning is one thing, so that there couldn't be commercial. The businesses across the street from this area that were zoned before, zoning, fit into the neighborhood, they're not, you know, they're in home, they're in warehouses. The one is no longer there, but the one, you know, it was the video store before and that, sometimes, I think. But my concern was, you know, whether, if this doesn't all go through, if this is rezoned and it doesn't, and something starts, like this lady over here said, what's that going to look like?
When they belly up.
When something, if it doesn't all work out, and so many things don't work out. I'm not against progress, I'm not against any of that stuff. I think it's good, and I think it would be good. But I'm concerned about some of the other businesses in town, depending on what businesses would locate there. Other communities have rezoned and put into effect that the, in certain areas, the businesses have to take on a look of the area that they're going to be built into. I'm thinking of Gaylord for one. When they rezoned, all their, certain things had to have the Alpine look, had to have, you know, different things. So I guess that's my concern, is once you open the door to rezoning, and once you rezone it, it just opens up a whole new plethora of things that could go wrong, ain't it?
Anybody else in opposition?
Yeah, I'm Kelly Yanni, and I'm a local business owner here in town, as many of you may know. And I am in opposition to the rezoning, for the primary reason that there are other commercial buildings and properties available. And to look at empty buildings at the face of, changing the face of how our downtown area looks, and the houses that will be affected of people that do live across the street and behind the said property that they're looking to rezone, my concern is that it takes away from the residential charm, which is, we have very limited housing in this area already. And while there are opportunities to improve on that, I don't feel like making that a commercial development would be, would be the best option for our charming town.
You'd rather see condemned homes?
Empty ones.
I'm Sonny White. This is our house right here. It was built 1913, and we bought it condemned in 1998. Just to the point of, it's almost finished, but we're getting there, we've worked at it quite a bit. My concern is, I'm assuming, I'm only assuming, this whole area will be flattened, bulldozed. A building to go in here, probably all blacktop, probably a dumpster. As most of you know, we have a skunk problem in Central Lake. Once the dumpster goes in, and even when the dump truck comes to dump it, when they squeeze their juices out, they're gonna, the skunks are going to enjoy it. The other thing is, we're going to have diesel trucks coming in and out of here. Honestly, I don't want to smell diesel, I don't want to smell skunks. I really don't want this all clear cut. I mean, my neighbors are going to be upset with me, but I'm sorry. I mean, I would take, if they offered me $200,000 for my house, I'd take it, but, you know, I don't want to leave my house. We've put too much money into it, not money, time and work. And we just had our basement finished. I just had my tree cut down and had the stump grinded out. I didn't want my tree to go, but it had to because of the wires. I don't want to see it. I think, I don't want to smell all the blacktop, I don't want to smell all the crap that's going to come downwind to my house. That's all I got to say. I still love my neighbors.
My name is Kelly Brivard. I live directly across from where it's going to go. I'm between the historical museum and what was the old salon, it was Dave's Hair Salon. That was, that's part of the town. I don't want parking lot, big lights, runoff across from my yard. That, it's, you're going to have trucks coming in, Covert runs right up, I mean, if somebody misses, if there's a problem with turning, they could end up in the front of my house. I think it's just bad for the look of the town. I've been, I've lived here off and on all of my life. I live in the house that my grandparents owned. It's been in the family for 74 years. I always thought this was the turn of the century town, and the look of what's going in across the streets, I mean, it's not something I want to look at. Not at all. I'm concerned with the lights at night. You're going to have spotlights all around the parking lot to keep it lit. What's that going to do for our house? I mean, I don't want lights coming in all night long in my house. I don't want trucks going in and out, up and down the street, early mornings, and emptying their loads. It's going to be noisy. We keep our windows open. It's a very quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and I'd hate to see that change with a big box door across the street. So I really hate to see the rezoning. Because if it doesn't go through, it's still going to be zone commercial. And it's a nice residential area. I would not want to see that change.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say, I've been in the antique business for many years, and I had customers coming from downstate, come every year. They love to come to these little old towns, they really do. And it'd be a shame to get it all torn up and turned commercial the whole time. And look how vauxman's have repainted the front. Everybody's trying to fix up everything, you know? Now you're going to have this modern type building. It just won't fit. Won't look right. But the customers I've had, they love to come to the old towns, and that would just take away the look of this town.
I think you're here in the community, truly are. I feel for the people that have gotten this great offer for their property. That's great. That's a great offer. I don't know what the offer is.
Then what are you saying to your community?
But if you look at and listen to the people talk, okay? Hell, I'll buy all three of them.
Please do. We need the money.
Okay, this is, again, on the rezoning only, not the stormy.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. When we bought that house that we live in, my wife already, to some points that she didn't bring up, that that house, it was condemned, they were going to tear it down. And in fact, I had a friend of mine offer me a gallon of gas and a fat book from that. She said, I'll save you a lot of heartache. But, you know, those 100-year-old houses aren't just, once they're gone, they're gone. You can't, you can't replace them, you know? And I got a lot of my sweat equity into that house, and to get it back to where it was as livable, it's a nice house now, and those other houses could get the same deal. I mean, just to go through and whack them all down and put it in a parking lot, is what you, you know, like the font says, you take paradise, you put it in a parking, you know, that's exactly what you want.
I would just like to reiterate, I think the commission needs to do an impact study before they make a decision to move it to a council, to have them make a decision. Because if you haven't done the impact study, how can they make an intelligent decision?
Anybody else want to speak in opposition?
Nancy Solz. I'm concerned with, who let the real estate company sold them a villa good saying that that could be zoned? And he went ahead and put all those offers in? And now they're pitting those poor people against the people that don't want it? What kind of real estate company did that? That's inconstable.
They searched it out.
To do that before?
They searched it out.
You know, they knew it, they knew it was commercial, or residential, and still went ahead and baited these people with money. You know, they knew what, they knew it was commercial, or residential, and still went ahead and dated these people with money.
Well, I can tell ya, I can see your house, and it's beautiful, and it's out there, and I have that church building. I didn't tear it down and build a modern building, I wanted to keep it the way it was, and I did. It's all natural pine floors and all of that maple forest, and the original windows in the church, the whole bit. And I was there for many years, and it's still there.
Yeah, sure. Um, I, I see a, a pattern of developing where people that have already spoken or speaking for the second and third time, there may be other individuals that wanna speak for the first time, so I would suggest to the chair that you recognize only those people that have not yet spoken.
Okay, my name is Larry Nickerson, now live on Ballard down here. Now, when you rezone this part of eighty-eight, does that mean the whole block is gonna be rezoned, or just the one area is gonna be rezoned?
From over to Ballard. But just the half.
Just the front half of the block, sure.
Just, just the front half, not the back?
No.
So, how can, how can you develop one part of a block and not develop the whole block? And what's the impact gonna be? And what, the people that live behind it, how, how is that gonna affect their value of their house? I'm talking about.
Anybody else speaking in opposition?
I'm Michelle Fox, and I oppose the change in zoning, because there are ample commercial properties available in the downtown area that could be repurposed. I know it's cheaper to build a pole barn type building, and, um, and it's certainly very difficult to maintain and to improve, uh, a downtown building that's a hundred some years old, but I think it's worth it, and, uh, I think that this community is worth it. And I am opposed to the damage that rezoning commercial to a residential area with historic homes would cause, not just today, but for the future.
Anyone else?
Um, my name is John Dan, and, uh, zoning was enacted not too long ago by the council, and I think they had a grand plan envisioned for this town, and, uh, they had, they have designated commercial, they have designated residential. I personally don't see why we need to change what was, what they had envisioned for our future.
Anyone else?
I moved to Central Lake in nineteen fifty-two as a young bride. I've lived in and around...
You're so pretty young.
Um, I love this town. And I lived on a farm outside of town for many years. And when it became time for me to admit that I could no longer handle the winters on the farm alone, I chose to come back into this town, and I built a house on Main Street, just two houses away from where they wanna change this. I made that change because I love Central Lake, I love the trees, I love the feeling of living in a town where I see friendly faces and that. I do not want to see commercial car, property next door, two doors away from me. I don't wanna see it anywhere in the town except, which is now commercial. If you need to have more buildings someplace else, then look into the township, not the town.
Hi, I'm Brad Glasgow, and, um, first I wanna say how impressed I am by how many people have showed up. It's, it's really great to see everyone, uh, here. Uh, my concern is, we got the house directly north of this property, Larry's house. I believe that's over a hundred-year-old house. Uh, the one northeast of that, Noel's house, is a hundred and ten years old. Uh, as they said, the house southwest of that is a hundred and two years old. Uh, there's history everywhere in Central Lake, and this is just gonna look awful if it becomes a commercial property. Uh, it, it's not going to add anything to the town. If they wanted to get a property, uh, take that property behind your Rocco's, or any number of other places that would add to the town. Don't take away to build, uh, this business, please, thank you.
Ken Cruzey, I, I used to have two questions. One, has the chair, has the commission looked at what spot zoning is, and is it allowed? And two, is that spot zoning?
Joe Bodley, Central Lake, same question.
Anybody else who wants to speak?
Brian, could you, could you answer the question? Is, is that property to the north?
I will address those.
Okay.
I think we'll use later.
Okay.
Are the opposition speakers complete? The applicant now has a chance to input.
I'm gonna be brief, but just want to clarify for the commission that, uh, I may have misspoke, but I was using the existing land use map when I qualified the two pieces on the other side. I didn't say it was zoned, saying your land use map shows commercial usage. We understand it's not a zone, but the land use map is. Uh, I'm gonna refer to your master plan update for two thousand and fifteen. On chapter seven of the planning and community development under the goals, item number four of that state, provide opportunities for the location of new commercial and limited light industrial business in Central Lake. And this, uh, this would provide a perfect opportunity for that goal to be met. We understand that, uh, master plan shows commercial practically black north of this proposed location. However, we feel it's, it's a continuation along the main corridor there, and whether or not these homes are, ever be, redeveloped or updated, uh, I, I can't say, but, uh, we think still this is a good fit, advantage here, and it's walkable to everybody in the area, our sidewalks there, and, uh, and utilities that are available are good stuff. Unless this mission has any questions, we still request that the zoning be approved from the mixed use, or from the residential to, to commercial.
Anybody else?
If that's the case, then like we heard...
Proceedurally, the people were given an opportunity to make their comment, the applicant was given the vote, that generally ends the process, so we're gonna go over and over, over, over. You gotta follow the right procedure.
Okay, thank you. With that, I declare the public hearing.
I'd like, I'd like to break those public hearing, I'd like to address some of the legal issues.
Okay.
Generally speaking, when you have zoning, the zoning enabling act requires that zoning be based on a plan, okay? And that plan is often depicted in what is known as the master plan, okay? I, I believe that it's, it's not really in dispute that the future land use map of your master plan calls for this area to continue to be residential. That's, that's the future plans of the, of the officials of this village. And so you have to take that into consideration. You have residential property, residential uses that are currently being used on these properties, okay? Because you have two, or at least one, commercial on the opposite side, that was a non-conforming use. It was not established pursuant to the plan, okay? It was pre-existing, and therefore is allowed to continue. So, because you have a non-conforming use in a particular area, that is not evidence that it is in fact the desire of the, of the principals of the village to, to allow that kind of a commercial use in that area. You also have to be aware of what they call illegal spot zoning, okay? And spot zoning is a concept where you take a limited number of parcels and basically rezone them in isolation with other parcels. Right now, you have a future land use map that shows, uh, this commercial about a block away from this area. So, if this particular, uh, property is rezoned, then I think you do have concerns for spot zoning, okay? If in fact, there's a desire to extend this commercial use down this corridor, and I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but the legal way to do this is, number one, you amend the master plan to, to basically reflect that this is now our change in view as to what should be appropriate in this area. And then, to avoid this spot zoning, you rezone more than just these three parcels. You rezone property between these properties and your, and your established residential area, so you don't have an isolation of rezoning. You basically rezone a, a larger area, and I'm not, and if that's the desire, then in fact you have to contact these other property owners and have a new public hearing and, and the whole nine yards. But as, as the record exists today, and I outlined all this in my memo, you have a case of spot zoning, in my opinion, because you're taking parcels that are isolated, that are not a natural extension of existing zoning, okay? Uh, so, but there are ways to, to avoid that if you want to, that's a policy choice. That's ultimately what, what the planning commission's gonna have to recommend, and, and what ultimately the village council will have to decide. Um, I, I basically outlined my analysis of the master plan in that memo I did, I think, May eleventh, I think, the day of it. Um, if, if there's any questions as to my memo or what happened, otherwise, Madam Chairman, I think we can close the public hearing, and you can get on to discussing amongst the planning commission members how you want this to go. If in fact during your deliberations, if a planning commission member has a question, it's either the applicant or a member of the public, you're, you're obviously free to give that answer during your deliberations. That will not reopen the public hearing, but you're asking a very specific question, you get a very specific answer.
Who wanted an explanation? Just for the public hearing.
If you look at your zoning orders, you get basically procedures that you can look at in terms of a rezoning request, it's an article or other, I believe, of the zoning order. Um, and, and you'll look at the various factors that you have to look at. What I'm passing out today is, is proposed motion. Option one would be a motion that would, based on the information provided by the applicant, would result in a recommendation by the planning commission to approve the rezoning request. Option number two is a motion that would basically do the opposite, uh, would basically make a recommendation to demand the rezoning request. Um, my role is not to help you decide which way to go, but to make sure that whatever decision you make is well documented.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to not approve it, option two is the one.
You're making a motion basically to incorporate action number two in the minute?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah?
The, do neither of these just address the spot zoning? Or do we do that at this point?
No, the, the option number two incorporates my memo, which tells you talks about the spot zoning.
Do we do a roll call?
Let's make sure we have, before you read my memo, let's get my... And then, obviously, a further discussion would be on, on the motion before we wrap up. I am sure the discussion is over, the discussion on motion is over.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Anybody else have any discussion? Take the roll call. Bridges?
It's called, option two.
The motion is whether you wanna adapt option two, do you guess to adapt, or no, you're not?
Yes, yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Huxman?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Truska?
Yes.
Zellner?
Yes.
Kozlowski, yes.
And is it, I don't know if it's out of order to request a copy of this memo, or can you discuss it?
Any public comment on anything other than this?
I'd like to talk to the good citizens of this town. These people need help with their house, let's help them. We got, we could paint, Mr. Harris did this fifty years ago, he painted the whole town. If you need help, let's help them fix it up.
Any other comment?
I'd like to thank the commission, thank you.
Thank you.